In the 2018 election with Governor Bevin, where we actually saw on television, real time, the movement of some 500 votes from one candidate to another. I mean, it was so stark, you saw them go down on one and up on the other on the exact number. Would that be a manifestation of what you're talking about?
So the working hypothesis from our counterparts on that, because they've worked that and watched it, and they actually went to Kentucky to assist the team there, was that that was a server level interdiction. So they went up to the server, downloaded a CSV file, changed the votes, and re-uploaded it.
Thank you, Rob Zem, Roberts.
So just to kind of tack on to what we were just discussing, it's my understanding, because there was an article here in Arizona from the Arizona Daily Independent, there was a quote-unquote whistleblower that was talking about issues that they had observed. And so, one of the things they were talking about was that the data from the machines was being moved via the hard drive. So what you just described as far as the real-time data being uploaded and all that stuff, just for the layman, that same type of manipulation, whether you're plugging in an ethernet cable or what have you, or you're doing it on a user interface, that same type of malfeasance could be accomplished in that method as well.
And I think in looking at these systems, we identified, you know, almost a dozen ways that you could inject or interdict to manipulate votes.
On that note, you said earlier that pretty much all of these machines have vulnerabilities. So is there any system out there that you're aware of that is worth exploring? Or do we just need to go back to the paper ballot?
There is, MIT developed a system with some capital infusion. It's a system called Votes V O A T Z, and it's a blockchain-type system. Again, it's, when I first became aware of this, I went and talked to some friends of mine who were bank presidents, and I said, "Okay, why can't we apply banking principles? Because if you want anything done right, you go talk to the money people." That's super text or stuff. And he said, "Oh yeah, and it's an app. You can do it as an app with, tie it in with Real ID and a blockchain-type solution," or, you know, the next-generation solution. But there are systems, and I believe the Votes system is deployed right now. I believe there, and I know West Virginia is one that I remember reading on their website.
Thank you. Senator Allen, any questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, appreciate it. Thank you for being here today. I'd like to go back to the Board of Supervisors' letter where they talk about certifying the Maricopa County election. And they have five points that they make for the reason why they call this a reliable election. And my concern is, of course, over the Dominion tabulation equipment. They said it was vetted by bipartisan Equipment Certification Advisory Committee before the contract was finalized. And as required by law, the committee tested the functionality and accuracy of tabulation equipment before it was used in any Arizona election. Well, after listening to your testimony, that does not give me any confidence, because the machines, of course, can perform very accurately. It is after, it's after the fact, after the election starts, after the ballot is starting to be put into the machine, that these problems start arising. So is that accurate to say that this does not, should not give us confidence about this being a reliable election?
Ma'am, anything that is software-based can be manipulated and changed with a click of a button. Or, you know, you got two USB drives, plug one in, and you get one algorithm. You pull it out, you plug another one in, you get a different algorithm. And we also believe on the connectedness, these can be pushed down from the top and shifted down. So think of it like a casino or a state lotto. You're, whoever owns the eye in the sky, you can control the margins. And that's really, I think, what we're looking at.
Well, certainly from your testimony, I can see that. And I have one more question, if I could, Mr. Chairman.
I believe Senator Burley has it to that point.
All right, go ahead.
All right, please proceed.
Well, I was going to switch down to the 1% early ballots that they did, and I had a question about that. So Sunny, if you have something to what I said before, go ahead.
Good, thank you, Mr. Chair. Colonel, so basically what you're saying, for example, since the techs are already there on-site during the process. So if a machine jams up, and naturally they call the tech over there to go fix the unjam, they could literally, without anybody noticing, because they're the techie people, take a stick of thumb drive in there and upload, change the numbers, manipulate, whatever.
We, there was an affidavit in Pennsylvania from, I think it was last week. A gentleman supervisor had a Ziploc bag full of USB drives, and they noted that he was inserting the USB drives into the machines at a much higher rate than would be necessary or that they had seen in the past. So, yes, you know, it's very, very...
So now I have it to that point. Forgive me, but it, what I think you're saying is that they have just created an electronic footprint, either in the data download that you're seeing real-time, that you'd be seeing some kind of a spike, or is there something that's captured on the machine that itself? Like a memory card that is resident on the machine, not, that is actually talking to the hard drive?
The machines, for the most part, the voting machines, are just run by, you know, removable software and data cards, the cards that actually hold the votes. The backup servers is really where the true story would reside as far as the uploads, downloads, the change, the error warnings for the mismatch errors.
So would you be able to show with specificity a machine in Maricopa County going all the way across the pond, inserting data into a server? Or would it be an aggregate of all the machines that were in Maricopa County, for example? Is it by individual tabulator? Or is it by the server here that collects? Can you help me understand that piece?
Let me, I'll put up...
That probably goes back to your headache graph, I'm thinking.
Yeah, a schematic that shows that.
The reason I ask the question is we're still looking for evidence. And if that is in the evidence package, that's certainly something that we would want to know about. If we don't have it today, something that could be forwarded to the body would be great.
Let me see if I can make this bigger. So this is Dominion Voting, the high-level. It's a block diagram of how are things connected. And I can print this off and provide it to you or whoever would do your audits. But it's kind of hard to, kind of hard to see when it's blown up. But you've got ballot boxes, ballots taken out, and this tracks all the way through the image cast central to ballot images. And this is really what's voted. The ballots are scanned into these image casters, and there's an electronic image created. It goes into results files, and then it goes into validation, adjudication, auditing, reporting, and publishing. And then to Democracy Suite EMS, Democracy Suite servers, the database servers, the document management servers. And it kind of shows you how this all goes out to the world from this whole system. Election data, you know, this is kind of the top feed to all these servers. But this is really, it's a network. I mean, it's a computer company. It's all networked. It has to be.
So let me reframe the question. We probably would not be able to identify any specific tabulation machine showing up on the server, because it's all aggregated.
Yeah, it's, these tabulation machines go through this process, but the results files. So if you work it backwards from the server, you would be able to go back to a ballot image, an electronic ballot image.
All right, thank you. Senator Allen, you have another question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The other thing in this letter by the Board of Supervisors was they commented, again, of what made this a reliable election, that the election day ballots from 2% of vote centers and 1% of early ballots is required by Arizona law, and it yielded 100% match to the results produced by the tabulation equipment. So that should give us, you know, and all the counties do this. They do this hand count, this little audit of a small percent of the votes to see how it matches up to the machine. So could you explain how we shouldn't have confidence in that particular? How can they, how can they make that match up to the machine then when they just arbitrarily pick out 1%? If there's vote dumps that are happening and things that are happening throughout the process?
I would just say it's something we learned a long time ago, garbage in, garbage out. If you've got 1.9 million votes that aren't, the signatures aren't verified, and they're just reading bubbled-in, you know, ballot cards, then yes, the ballot cards, when they run 1,000 ballot cards through, are going to come out with 1,000. So that, you know, that small batch would represent what those particular ballots say. But there's, again, there's, that's why there's chain-of-custody requirements. That's why there's verification requirements at each step along the way. So if each one of those, if one of those steps is broken, then the validity of the whole process is in question. You know, you just don't know.
Right, thank you. I think we're definitely, sir, in a new day when it comes to what is taking place across this country with voting. And we're going to have to probably really look at that. Thank you.
Representative Townsend, you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Colonel, I just have a quick follow-up to some of the stuff we've been talking about as far as the security of the machines themselves. And as we know, like, whether or not something happened or didn't happen, I'm most concerned with voter confidence. And if there's all these holes, then we're going to really deflate or collapse voter confidence. So I would like you to reassure me on one particular item. In the tabulation room at the MEC Tech here in Phoenix, in years past, it was, you had to have a special badge, and only people that were certified to be in that room with the machines and the tabulation and all that were allowed in there. This year, I was told yesterday, we had teams of 25 adjudicators in that room, in the tabulation room with those machines. Would it have been possible for someone in that scenario to wander over to the machine and have a conversation and put in this thumb drive you're talking about? Or is it deeper than that, or something that's happened from remotely? Or how secure are these machines? Because we know that there's no chain-of-custody on the hard drives. And, you know, the machines we saw in a video left alone for almost a week in one of the voting centers, untended, unsecure, you know, how could somebody, a regular person with nefarious intentions, walk up and change this whole election by putting in a thumb drive and changing an algorithm? Is that something that could have happened, or we don't have to worry about that?
Either an individual that has knowledge of the systems and how to, you know, operate in the system could have an impact, again, from the server. By, they could be sitting in Nigeria in a, you know, you know, as long as they've got an internet connection, they could get to that particular server. If they were, had access to, you know, the data from the malware that's on the server, they could get the login and password from, you know, a Pima County operator or, you know, a Maricopa County operator. So there's just so many places that they can be interdicted or penetrated. There's just, there's just too many to, you know, to describe. But there's a lot of, a lot of ways it could be interdicted.
Mr. Chair and Colonel, so what I'm hearing you say is I can't be confident that a volunteer of a political party that, you know, that the entire recorder's office and the elections director, everyone could have been on the up-and-up, and this is the most secure election ever. But if one random volunteer with the right information were to be in the tabulation room, could have then breached the security of the machine.
Correct.
And therefore, we cannot stand here and say we are confident with that kind of access to these machines, machines left in buildings for a week. We cannot say with certainty that this is a secure election, and we have 100% confidence that nothing went wrong.
And you just brought up the chain-of-custody issue, and that's, that's a critical vulnerability path. So if the chain-of-custody was broken, then you really, you really don't know. You can't, you can't say with confidence that it was a fair election.
And Mr. Chair and Colonel, last point. If you were in charge, would you want a recount? Would you want an audit? Would you want a do-over? What would you do?
A forensic audit will tell you what was processed. But to the mayor's point earlier, as soon as those mail-in ballots, which were 1.9 million requested, and I think a good percentage returned. If those signatures weren't verified, then, you know, you can count the same things over and over again. But, you know, it's, you're starting with flawed results already. An audit, a full audit, would be able to tell you if those were, you know, bad ballots or pre-printed ballots. You know, you could do a full forensic audit on the actual ballots. But once the envelopes are separated from the ballots on that many mail-in ballots, it's, it's almost, it's almost impossible to go back without doing a forensic analysis of each ballot in the paper and ink.
Okay, and Mr. Chair and Colonel, do you have any information about potential shipments of ballots to Arizona and other places from North Korea? Or something like, do you have any information like that?
There were several affidavits that were provided to the legal teams. I don't have those affidavits with me now, but there were affidavits and suggestions. And I think more of those are in process to obtain more affidavits on those processes.
Mr. Mayor, can you tell us whether or not you have got, I don't know if you heard the question, or do you have affidavits that counterfeit ballots were somehow shipped into Arizona?
I'll have to look.
All right, thank you. Representative Cook, any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you, and I'll make it brief. But I do have some stuff that I'd like to say that... Colonel, when I ran for office in 2016, I got a phone call one day that one of our county recorder's office information had been breached, and all of the voter information was for sale on the dark web. That was my first instance of being as, becoming representative about this hacking and computer stuff and what's out there. I just went through my third election as the top vote getter, and I would like to say that I continuously have been tried to be hacked on my personal or ledge account or whatever is out there on the internet. I later learned from people, Colonel, that the reason why this is done out of the country, and according to your graph, is that it is harder for us to track these people down and prosecute them when these computer anomalies and things happen from outside the country inside our country and state. Would that be true?
We would not have the legal jurisdiction to go seize or search a server outside of the US.
Thank you, Colonel. And would this make sense that if you had a simple phone number, and then you went on the internet and then researched that phone number of where you received a text message, and it was from Ukraine, would that not be a red flag that your phone or information was trying to be attacked or infiltrated?
Correct, it would be.
Okay, so moving on to that, Colonel, what I've noticed is that about these voting machines and these plugged-in USB drives, when in fact, when we watch across this great country of ours, and many states, we have very few mountain counties compared to other states in here. You've got to target two counties. If you notice that rural Arizona and rural Arizona legislators are up here, we're ready to go to work today. Our constituents demand it, and we demand it as their representatives, to work for them to solve these problems. But what happens, Colonel, is that the same thing when we look at this country on a map, and counties that vote for the President Trump versus counties that don't, it's the population and the masses. So I'm going to get to my point about Maricopa and Pima County. Okay, we all, in rural Arizona, we call it the great state of Maricopa, because Maricopa County has more legislators at the legislature than rural Arizona does. If we add all of ours up, we still don't have the numbers to be an equal voice at the state legislature, but we have to work harder, which we can't. So if we look at Maricopa and Pima County, if I was going to, now we're going to get down to vote centers. Okay, targeted vote centers, Colonel. I wouldn't have to have a USB drive or to infiltrate every voting machine in every vote center in Maricopa and Pima County, would I? Or would I just need to target those individual voting centers in those two massive counties in this state to do what you are saying to take votes and shift them over in those numbers? Do you understand what I'm asking?
I've seen analyses that boil down national elections to ZIP codes, to just ZIP codes.
Mr. Chairman, I get fired up when I get into this stuff, because I read and hear everything that these people have said. It has happened to me. And I just thank you again for your information, confirmation. But when I go back to the 2016 hacking, what I see is a pattern, Colonel, is that there is a plan. There's a larger plan, and it's not a conspiracy theory, and I'm not nuts. But if I wanted to engage in a plan in 2016, Colonel, would I not start hacking and getting the voter databases and information of projecting of, why do we have, what is the number? 2,000 or 1,200 voters, I believe, in Maricopa County registered that I believe have voted at a vacant lot? I mean, if I really wanted to go down the road, isn't that the way you would target it?
Yeah, and again, it's, you can interdict this in multiple levels and multiple methods, and I think that's what's happened. It's a, there's so much out there. And it's, to your point, you know, you're not a conspiracy theorist, but it's really hard, they've made it so hard for the public to understand it. And we call that in deception operations, ambiguity increasing.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Colonel, I have the last question is, and what concerns me over what I've read and seen is that could the data that you say could be traced back only to the scanned ballot at this point? So it can't go back to the individual voting machines. Could that be bleach-bits or whatever that stuff is? Could that be, could, could the tracks, as long, the longer we take to actually get the machines and check these things out, could there be time to erase that information and cover up if there was a crime or misdeals?
There could, but now the batch files will go back to the precinct and the machines on the tapes. So there, you can track it all the way back to the machines in the precincts by the tapes. And it's what we showed in the Antrim County, those printouts on the precinct level. So that, you can go back. But really, all that's necessary to do is not really a bleach bit. It's just pulling the USB drive out of the voter machine and the tabulators. So the machines themselves, other than the servers, really don't have a lot of resident information. The tabulation machines, they can have some stored images. But the, you know, where they, you retain these, you know, the federal election requirements require, I can't remember the US Code Title 46 rings a bell, but the 22-month retention of federal elections records, it would be done in those, the ballot images and, you know, electronic backups. So the data is retained, and there, you know, you can do forensics on it as long as it's the actual, the actual servers and the actual machines.
Colonel, thank you for your time, your patriotism. And, Mr. Chairman, I yield any remaining time I may have.
Thank you. I believe Senator Gawain has one more question. And I just need to remind the panel, time grows short. I think Mayor Giuliani has significant more witnesses and evidence that he'd like to have heard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Colonel, I just want to get on, come back to the Dominion situation here. Where are the, where are the backup servers?
I'm sorry?
Where are the backup servers?
I am not exactly sure. I can try to get that information provided to you.
And this company, I think the mayor said they were a foreigner company? The Canadian, is that what it is?
So we know, we know there are sites in Toronto. Their offices are in Canada, so we know that, we know that there were data there. They also have servers in Serbia and other companies. But as far as knowing for sure where the data from Maricopa County went and resides, we don't know that, but they've got backup servers.
So an audit, because we talked about that a little earlier. First off, would that find where the, where the server is and where the information would be?
Tracing the flow of the information, yes, sir.
The audit would do that?
Correct.
And, but it'd also tell us whether or not it's true or not that the 1.9 million signatures were or were not verified, right? So we would have an absolute knowledge of that.
Colonel, could you get a little bit closer to the microphone? I'm getting, a lot of people are saying, "I can't hear the guy talk."
So the adjudication of the signatures on the ballots, that would be totally separate. Wouldn't be necessarily a digital forensic process. But that audit would be, you know, have to be conducted at the county level on all those, on all the envelopes.
So if we did an audit, if we were able to do that, tell me the things that could come out of that.
Well, if the signatures on the envelopes were invalid, you could necessarily get a percentage of the votes that would be disqualified. But again, when, when the ballots are separated from the envelopes, you know, you can't tell which ballot came from which envelope. So really, all that would tell you is a percentage of that, the percentage of those mail-in or absentee ballots that were not legitimate.
So what would the, what could the server tell us?
The server would basically tell you all of the electronics. So once the ballots are processed, the batches and the images, that'll, that'll tell you where all of those goes. And it'll also tell you any changes to the software, any updates, algorithms that were in place. And that's all resonant at the, at the code level. And that's really what these companies have balked at, providing access to the code, because they say that that's their intellectual property. And it's, they've been successful at preventing folks from analyzing the code.
So they're, they're utilizing their, their system for our elections, but it's their property.
And counties and states have signed up for that.
Thank you.
Senator Burley, final question.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Colonel, just for clarity, not only can these machines be manipulated with a thumb drive and everything else, it can be changed remotely outside the voting center.
That's, that's correct. And there are references in the user's manual that show how they can do that.
Thank you.
Mayor Giuliani, anything else with your witness here? All right.
I think we covered everything.
Thank you, sir. Do you have a next witness? I'm looking at the clock, and I know that we've got a time management issue with one of our witnesses.
Yes, I think we should call Anna Horst.
Okay.
Because she has an appointment, and we'll call her first.
Okay, and then after that, Senator Pat Kolbeck. We need to make sure that we have him at the airport by 1:00. All right, thank you very much. Anna Horst?
Is Anna Horst here?
Anna Horst?
A-N-A-H-O-R-T.
Anna Horst.
All right, we'll check on her. And let's go then to...
All right, Senator Pat Kolbeck. Just so folks know that we've got folks in a separate room, just so that we can bring them out and have some kind of border here. Senator Kolbeck. Thank you, sir. If you would, could you please introduce yourself?
Yes, my name is Michigan, former Michigan State Senator Patrick Kolbeck. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you, Mr. Chair, and esteemed panel members. For eight years, I was sitting on the other side of this testimony. I was where you were sitting. And hopefully, I'll be able to provide that kind of a unique perspective. I was where you were sitting, and hopefully I'll be able to provide that kind of a unique perspective and what to look out for in this election. If you, excuse me, I'm going to try to get my presentation up here and get that going. Kick it up.
Yeah, technology is great until you want to use it.
It's more difficult when you can't see. Nice job on the resolution of the screen here, by the way. Okay. And just for background purposes, as we're looking forward to recognize my USB flash drive. There we go. Much better. Et voila. Okay.
Oh, we still don't have it on the screen yet. There we go. And if you, if you would, please put it in play mode so we can see it. All right, please proceed.
All right, thank you very much. Perfect compliment, I think, to Colonel Waldron's testimony here because I kind of got a unique experience regarding this whole election process. First of all, I am a former Michigan State Senator. I served on the Senate, Michigan Senate Elections and Government Reform Committee. I took those duties very seriously, to the point of diagramming out all of our election processes. So I have pretty good understanding of how elections are supposed to work from a book perspective. But another perspective that's useful to this discussion is that something that I couldn't do while I was running for office, it's actually, I served as a poll challenger in Detroit at the AV Accounting Board for the election day, from 5:00 PM through the next day into the evening of the following day on November 4th. So I was actually at the Detroit AV Accounting Board. So you may have heard about all the things that happened there, all the cardboard up on the windows. Yes, I was there. I was one of the people blocked from returning back into the Detroit AV Accounting Board. So I could resume my duties as poll challenger. I was up training our next batch of poll challengers as to what they need to look out for and what we had been seeing. And coincidentally, by the way, that was when they were counting the military ballots, which, just so you guys know, that's when they duplicate the ballots because the military ballots come in in a format that's different from those that can be read by these tabulators. And if you don't have a Republican and a Democrat watching that, it's ripe for malfeasance, if you will. And that's exactly what happened. So along with that background, I'm actually a certified Microsoft Small Business Specialist. In addition to being that, I actually did cable and designed the International Space Station. So I have no problem working with technology. So it's kind of a unique background. And, and just so happened that I was right there on the Detroit AV Accounting Board on the night of the election. So I'm going to focus in on just, highlight three areas of the diagram that Colonel Waldron just showed you because that's important for everybody to understand for people on the ground. These are the key pieces of technology. He talked about Imagecast Central. That's the equipment that I witnessed at the Detroit AV Accounting Board. It features a high-speed scanner and a workstation associated with it. These were networked in turn with adjudicator machines, which anything that was rejected by the high-speed scanner would go over to this adjudicator machine. That was part of the absentee ballot counting suite, if you will, for Dominion. In addition, they had something that was called Local Data Center, where all the election officials would work from a central computer workstation with a series of laptops, et cetera, that, that were connected to the rest of these computers. We'll get into that a little bit later here. But that Imagecast Central area is one of the key pieces of, or key systems, if you will, that are on the ground for the absentee ballots in particular. If you're at an in-person polling location, you'll have the Imagecast Precinct set up. And that's on the right-hand side of this diagram. Up on the top is kind of the local data center and the, kind of the eye in the sky, the overarching look at what's going on with the election. And we'll get into that a little bit more detail later. And as you guys know, Dominion Voting Systems was used here in Arizona in Maricopa County. And they were using some of the same equipment we were just talking about in regards to Imagecast Precinct and also Imagecast Central, that can, the scanner there. So I said that I was in your position before, right? So if I were in your position, these are kind of some of the key questions I would be asking in regards to all that we're hearing about this testimony regarding this election. Number one, was the chain of custody for the election artifacts broken? And thank you very much, Senator-elect Townsend, for bringing that up. That is a key term for everybody to understand, chain of custody. And we're going to go over a little diagram on specifically where some of my comments are going to focus in on in that chain of custody. All right, and the key is to hit the right arrow, all right? And was there evidence of election fraud? There can be fraud that happens that may not even violate statute, but you know that the intent is there to defraud the election, and they take advantage of loopholes that we have in the law. For example, in Detroit, we know that there was an ability for people to vote both at the poll and absentee. So some people's votes were more important than others. Was there evidence that election statutes were violated? Yeah. And Michigan, we have evidence to suggest that's exactly what happened. Was there evidence of foreign agents with the ability to manipulate the election data? And third parties getting access to that data? We believe that we've seen evidence of that as well. But the other thing need to ask is, well, all right, what are we going to do about it if we see all this happening? And what options do you have as legislators? All right, so let's go to this chain of custody. And I could go into a lot more detail on this chain of custody. And I'll, but I like to simplify it into just four key artifacts. Qualified voter file, i.e. who's registered to go off and vote in your state. Number two, poll book, that's a precinct-specific extract of the data from your qualified voter file. The ballot itself, pretty important artifact, right? But then, in the spirit of the old "stall" quote, it's not he who votes that counts. It's the one who counts the vote that counts. You got to look at the ballot tabulator and how the votes are tallied. And that was my focus when I went to the Detroit AV Accounting Board. I was one of those folks that was not specifically assigned to any particular counting station. I was looking at the big picture. And we'll go over what I found here in a sec. First of all, everybody hopefully has seen the idea that there's been a lot of voter non-leaks. This is our first clue that something's happened. When you're on the ground, you can see all the things that are happening, you know, onesie-twosie style. And you say, hey, wait a minute, that, that envelope was backdated. Or you can see that they adjudicated something in favor of the Democrat and so the Republican or something like that. That's easy to go off and see, but it's very difficult to see the big picture. That comes out afterwards with experts like Colonel Waldron. And in this case, we first started seeing issues when people were talking about Benford's Law being violated. That's actually used in criminal court cases to determine whether or not fraud existed. So that was the first indicator that some of the analyses we've seen flagged that. That's not proof. I mean, it's getting the, it's telling you that it's, you've got something off here that you got to investigate. Then we've seen linear regression analyses, that there's a lot of noise in, but it seemed to indicate a pattern of vote distribution that indicated some data manipulation. Then, most recently, we have actually seen folks who believe that they've identified specifically what the algorithm that was used to switch some of the data. So some other things that were kind of odd, and you don't see while you're necessarily on the ground, but in retrospect, you'll be able to get access to it. This is actually documented as part of the affidavit that was submitted in a lawsuit that's put in Michigan by Sidney Powell and in other states. And you guys have voted quite a bit. You guys are, most of you have already served in office, right? Do you remember any of your votes being tabulated with a decimal point in the back of them? I don't remember any. My eight years serving in the Michigan Senate, any times where I actually had a decimal point after a vote tally.
So that would suggest that a partial person was voting?
Well, sometimes, you know, there are people that tried to make you feel like a partial person when you serve. But no, that wasn't the case here. And so you guys have probably all heard about what I call the little switch, the Antrim County. We've heard testimony on that already today and some of the things that could possibly happen. Getting into the possible technical reasons for that is maybe you have an internal ballot barcode switch on it where they have one barcode style or ballot style that's flagged. And then when they associate a specific scan of a vote, they flip it over to a different barcode style that may have the voters or the candidates flipped in it. Something else is something called a rank, ranked choice voting algorithm. That's one of the modules inside of the Dominion suite. And this is where you might see evidence of, this is the only place that I know of at least I can start putting in fractions into your vote. Because if you meet a certain vote threshold, it'll go off and switch that. It'll prioritize the votes for the second choice, if you will, and give them 10% of the first choice of whoever, of the, or 10% or whatever number you specify. It'll actually get into the point of allocating percentages of votes to one of the candidates. Another thing is data manipulation via remote access. And another thing to look at as you guys investigate what happened here or didn't happen inside of Arizona is take a look at your public accuracy test. And there are people that, this is usually in Michigan at least, it's specified what the standards are for that by the Secretary of State. And if you don't run all the possible permutations of votes that might happen on a given ballot, you may leave gaps that can be exploited. And I would submit, and we're going to show one of the examples of where we believe one of those gaps is that you could maybe flip a vote from a certain candidate to a write-in candidate and preload this with write-in candidates. And we think we have evidence of that happening in Detroit. So if you want to go off and check into this, one of the things you're going to need to do, so, yep, is look into compact flashcards, event logs, and paper vote tallies. So these tabulator data cards, that's where the compact, that's where a lot of the election data we wanted to look at is going to be located, so please make sure you get your hands on that. Then we talk about the big switch. I'm not going to get any detail on this. Suffice it to say, in Michigan, you know, our current vote deficit for President Trump is being projected as 154,188 votes. We got more than that that we can tie back to potential fraud. So in state of Michigan, I know a lot of people have written us off in this context, but I tell you, Michigan's in play because of what the level of fraud we've seen. So here's what our Detroit AV Accounting Board looked like. And essentially, it was set up, so there's 503 precincts in the city of Detroit. They put in 134 of these Imagecast Central stations all the way around. That's where the poll books were located. And there are about two to five precincts per Imagecast Central unit. We had five poll workers per station. Overall, I would submit there's probably less than 10 Republican workers the whole night sitting at those. And by law, we're supposed to have a Republican and a Democrat adjudicating ballots. Here's what, I said that I was looking at the big picture when I got in there. I was looking at the big picture. First question I asked was, one of these chief election officials, his name was Chris Thomas, I said, who I worked with when I was serving in the Senate, I said, what, how are you going to protect the chain of custody around the tallies of the individual tabulators and, and your report outs to the county and all points beyond that? So we talked about the idea of this getting reported out to New York Times. You can see it on CNN and all that kind of stuff. Show me how that chain of custody is protected. And this election official, who was state elections director in Michigan for two decades, said, I don't know. Now, this is kind of an important data point, don't you think? So, and I was bad during the rest of the night, and I said, you know what? He finally acquiesced and said, tell you what, I'll let you know. And then finally, the last statement he had on it, because I was pretty persistent, was saying, you know what? I'm not going to tell you till after tomorrow. And I go, well, you know what the primary duty of a poll challenger is? To make sure that the election process are executed effectively, efficiently, and accurately in transparent manner. He did not allow that to be done. Now, I can see physical transfer of data. I can watch when somebody moves a flash drive from a tabulator to a central station, and I can go off and verify vote counts at that handoff. I can't get inside wires to go off and trace electrons through the ethernet cables that I saw positioned. And that's the next point I want to highlight. And this is something important for you to understand here, is how these were connected. A lot of these election officials will swear up and down that none of these machines were connected to the internet. And that's based on propaganda being pushed by companies like Dominion Voting Systems. They will say that they have an air gap. They will say that they have firewalls in place. They have encryption in place. And I hope to demonstrate here that that doesn't mean a heck of a lot. And any hacker worth their salt knows that if one computer is connected to the internet, they're all connected to the internet, firewall or not. And so here's a diagram that I put together based on, and I, this is literally midnight the next night before I forgot everything. I wanted to make sure I documented everything that was there. I went through and physically traced all the cables from all the tabulators and adjudicators to the local data center at the, at the top. So it's that local data center that we have election officials that did confirm that that was connected to the internet, but they said none of the tabulators or anything else were connected to the internet. I can show physical connection between those tabulator, tabulator machines, the ethernet cables, two routers or managed switch, it's tough to tell from 12 feet away. But they're, it's a router type of device connected to all the other devices on this network. And as Colonel Waldron pointed out, it's designed to work as a network. And so all these tabulators were connected to one another, all the adjudicators were connected to one another. The local data center that they acknowledged was connected to the internet were connected to these tabulators and adjudicators. So, and so if that wasn't enough, we went around to all the different computers and observed in the bottom right-hand corner of all the computers, I can't do this because it defaults into a certain slide presentation mode. But if you have laptops that are window-enabled and you're connected to the internet, you roll over that, and you got a Windows 10 device, roll your mouse cursor over in that bottom right-hand corner, and you'll see a LAN internet connection icon. And you roll over it, it's going to pop up and say, connected to the internet. They wouldn't do that test for me to go off and demonstrate that. Yeah. So guys, it's serious stuff. And I also wanted to highlight, I took a snapshot of what the Wi-Fi connections were at that point in time. And one of them is called AV underscore connect. I wonder what that was connecting. Part of their spec that they have in the contract with the state of Michigan that is supposed to be connected via ethernet cables. And they even have cellular-based modems that they can plug into a lot of these items to transfer the data over the internet. They've got a Dominion Tech Support Manual that says, connect it to the ethernet. There's no denying that this was network-connected. And by the way, even if they say it wasn't connected to the internet, in the Detroit AV Accounting Board, I can trace a physical connection that says that the system that was used to tabulate 172,000-plus votes in the state of Michigan was all networked together. So even if it wasn't some guy sitting in an ice shanty in Antarctica connected to the internet, that one guy in the city of Detroit that had access to all that information could modify the votes locally there. And so why does it matter? Well, we already talked about these man-in-the-middle attacks. We talked about, there, in the Sidney Powell lawsuit that's out there, there's additional exhibits that highlight that these passwords are available on the internet. And when you have a man-in-the-middle attack, you think you're getting the right data. You think you're talking to the right person, but you ain't. You're talking to an in-between guy. We also got NIST that left a key under the map. What do I mean by that? All the specs on what files to look for, what their file size is, everything else for the voting system is left up on the internet for everybody to go off and see. I went there myself. I could download this file, took that extract from it. You can find out everything you need to go off and manipulate as a hacker. And we've got challenger observations on the ground that attest to each and every one of these. And I just want to highlight one of them, the poll worker observation, that we actually, he actually observed the fact that the printout of the tape said that there were write-in candidates on it, yet when you actually, he will test in his affidavit that there were no write-in ballots submitted.
Senator Kolbeck, we're out of time.
Yep.
So thank you very much for your testimony. We also appreciate the slide deck that you presented. And if you are willing, would you please distribute it, that to the members of this panel? And I'm sure Mayor Giuliani would like to have it as well.
I will leave the camera for everybody.
Any questions for this gentleman, Mayor? Or would you like to move on to Anna Horst? All right. Thank you very much, Senator. Anna Horst, would you please come up to the witness stand? I guess it's a table, not a stand. I was just corrected. The witness sit. Thank you for coming, Anna.
Thank you for having me.
Would you please give your name and, Mayor, the floor is yours.
My name is Anna, and I'm a resident and registered voter in Pima County. I volunteered as a poll observer.
Can you get a little bit closer to the microphone, please?
Sure, of course.
Thank you.
Again, my name is Anna, and I'm a resident and registered voter in Pima County. I volunteered as a poll observer on October 16th. And then I signed up to work as a poll worker on November 3rd in a neighboring precinct. Would you like me to just give you an overview?
Yes, please do.
Okay. Well, I wrote in because I was aware of some irregularities that happened while I was a poll observer and some different... I was a poll observer and some different activity that I just felt uncomfortable with on Election Day. So, I'll go ahead and start with what happened on the day that I was an observer. I was certified prior to that to be able to watch the two people that would be correcting the problematic ballots, which I guess are called, they were duplicates. When I walked into the room, they said, "I'm sorry, you're not, you can't be in here. You're going to go into the, another room." So, I had to walk back to the front desk. I was escorted from that area back to the, to the one area where the ballots were being separated from their envelope. And I, I was, there were 30 to 32 people doing this, and there were probably 14 to 17 tables that were, they are sat two people. And it was supposed to be a Democrat and a Republican. But not every table had a Democrat, but not every table had a Republican. So, many of those tables had either a Libertarian or someone, there was one table with someone from the Green Party, and then there were three or four tables that had a Pima County worker at the, at each of those tables. And they worked there at the elections office because when people came in from the building, they talked to them, and their conversations led me to believe things like, "Oh, did you leave your lunch? Did you bring lunch?" And they said, "No, it's over in my office. I'm going to go get it later." And she was back in five minutes. So, similar situation conversations that went on with people who came in with those, with those workers. I found it difficult for me to be able to oversee 32 people and what they were doing. I was able to catch a few of the things that were mistakes or where ballots were just, they were taking them out of the envelopes and putting them on in a pile. And their job in this particular bill, room was to watch, to make sure that the ballots were in one direction, and then they would double-check the count of the ballot to the envelope, to, to, I imagine, to check it against the envelopes that came in. Each table was given a bin to put these in, and these bins would then go to another area where they were being stacked up to be tabulated starting on October 22nd. Many of these had mistakes, or they were written in pencil. And the workers, as I went around, had questions on, you know, "Is this a good ballot? Is this not?" I was told by the gentleman that ushered me out of the place where I was supposed to be and said, "You aren't supposed to talk to anyone. You do not communicate with them. If you have an issue or you see an issue, you need to go to the supervisor, which is at the front of the table, at front of the room." So, as I saw things, as I went around to each table, I would go to the supervisor and I let her know, you know, "They don't know what to do with this, this ballot. It's in pencil or blah, blah, blah." And she'd say, "No, it's fine. It's fine." So, as I went back to the tables where I saw these issues, under my breath, I said, "You need to go tell her. You need to go talk to them about this." And so, many of them said, "What do I do with this ballot? It's in pencil." "Oh, it's fine. It'll go through." Or, it was, some people wrote over their ballot, over the little oval circle where they were supposed to mark. And those were put into a pile, a separate pile that would be called duplicates. Those duplicates then went to another table and were then taken to the room where I had been ushered out of. And there was one person, there was supposed to be a second person. And I said, "Is there a Republican at that table?" Because I said, "Is there a Democrat and a Republican?" And he said, "Well, we hope so. They have to, if they get here, but it'll just be, you know, just be me and hopefully a second person." So, as I saw these ballots along this area that was, that they marked as dupe, which I understood to stand for duplicates that were going to be fixed. They would then be taken to the table, to the room where I could see a glass, it was a glassed wall between us, and they were taken around to the other side to be dealt with. I didn't get to see that at that point. So, when I left and the other person took over for me at 1:00, I was there for five hours, I shared with her, I said, "There's a lot of mistakes that are happening. They're just, they're not putting them in, in the order that they need to be in. So, when they get folded, they become a duplicate because they can't be counted. The machine wasn't going to accept them. So, it had to be then taken out of the pile and put into a duplicate." So, when I left, the man who had ushered me out of the room, the first room, came to get me at 1:00 and walked me straight over to the front desk. And he said, "I hope everything went well." And I said, "Well, my concern is not necessarily where I was. It's hard for me to watch 32 people by myself. But more concerning is when these ballots were opened in the other room." And so, to give you kind of a sense of how it worked is, the ballots, however they were collected, were brought into an initial area of the office at the elections in Pima County. And that room, they were then, the envelopes were then opened up, and the signatures were checked. So, then they would go through a double door where they were then sent to the room that I was in, where there were, as many people as I explained before, trying to put them in an order, not necessarily of where they were from, but how they came in. So, just, let's just say there were maybe 200, 250 per box, I'm not sure, but they, they came from different zip codes, different areas. It was whatever was mailed in. And then those were then put aside to be counted after the 22nd. It was, my concern was the amount of ballots that were considered to be problematic, that were then leaving the area that I was in, going to a room where there were only supposed to be two people, and yet not even sure there was two people. So, that was my experience as an, as an observer that I shared. I thought that was concerning. The other thing is, when I came back to drop off my ballot, I had to drop it off outside, and there was no longer a police officer. And we found out that it was because our mayor, or not my, I live in Oro Valley, but the Tucson mayor had asked, had, wasn't allowing a police officer in front of the office anymore because it was upsetting to people to come and vote. And so, I asked the man, "So, my, I have to put my ballot out here." And he said, "Yes." So, I said, "How can I be sure someone isn't going to come and take this big box?" And he said, "No, we're, you know, we're watching it." And I said, "Who's you?" And it was him and an elderly woman who was about 85. I, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm sorry, meaning that she was, she looked fragile. And I don't know how that could be protected, but I was a little concerned about that. It did make it in because when I checked my ballot, it was counted. But another question is, how, how do we know who we voted for? That's a separate issue, but my point is, is that I don't know if my ballot actually has the, the people that I voted for. And, you know, as I said, that's something separate from what I experienced there as an observer. As a poll worker, I was assigned to be a provisional ballot clerk. And that was on Election Day. And on that day, I had worked the primary in August. So, I had an idea of who would come by, what the issues were. But this time, we had so many more people who needed a provisional ballot than we had been allotted to have in this one precinct. So, that was concerning. But the people that came to me were, I had so many people who said, "I didn't ask for a mail-in ballot. My wife isn't listed as a, as an early ballot person, but I am." And that, those are the kind of people that we had a lot of. But secondly, I had people who had just moved here from other states, and most of them were from two apartment complexes. It was, it was concerning because as we counted them, we probably had over 40 people who were in one apartment complex with one address, who had moved here from other states, that I began to turn away. A little, I'd say, I don't know, within the hour, we were so busy that I took a break and went outside. And a gentleman with a yellow shirt said, "Hi, I'm with, I'm with the Democratic Party. I'm here from California, and I'm here at this precinct specifically. I came from a Phoenix, in Maricopa County, a precinct there, and we're here to help turn Arizona blue." And I don't know if, just looking at me, he decided that he felt safe saying that to me? Maybe he assumed that I would be okay with that. I was shocked. And he, and I said, "Oh, so what," he said, "Oh," I said, "So, what is, what is your plan? What are you doing?" And he said, "Well, I have lawyers on call to contact immediately if you, if they don't allow them to vote, people to vote." And I said, "Well, there was a cutoff date." And he said, "Nope, every count, every vote should count." So, that made me nervous, of course, because I didn't know the law specifically, and I didn't want to do something that would cause a problem. So, I thought, and he said, "Oh, I've only had to turn away, no, just a couple people were turned away, and I was able to help one person go back in." Well, that, that was probably sent to me because I was the provisional ballot clerk. So, of course, that was somebody that I had to take care of. So, I went back in and thought, "Well, this is unusual. I, I'm concerned that somebody outside is going to be calling an attorney on something that I did." Because I said, "No, I sent somebody away and said, 'I'm sorry.'" I mean, if you don't have any proof that you've lived here or proof of having registered, I, I can't, I can't give you a ballot. So, I called the recorder's office and explained this. And she said, "Well, you have to let them, all votes will count, but it's on a case-by-case basis." So, at that point then, I had to call in to the recorder's office every, at every single ballot. And you have to understand, we ran out of spaces. So, I mean, I, and we were at like 200. I'm sure you can check on this to be sure, but we were over the amount of ballots we had. But every time I called the recorder's office, they would ask me for their name and their, their birth, date of birth. And when they would look that up, she, the person on the phone would say, "Okay, well, you can go ahead and let them vote." And so, I was trying to find a constant that I could go by so that we could speed up the process. I mean, is it, is it if they've moved here and they have this, and if they've moved here at a certain date, what is it? And they would not give me any constant. They just said, "You just have to call for, every case is different." So, my concern and why I wrote in was that I had two people, right after having a slew of people who came in from other states wanting to vote without having been registered and allowed to vote per the recorder's office, I then had someone come in from Maricopa County and one from Pinellas County. It just happened right after. And each of them, when I called in, they said, "Nope, you're going to have to have them go back to Maricopa County, and the other one will have to go back to Pinellas." And I said, "Well, how is that that this person from Wisconsin and this person from Michigan and this person from Kentucky was able to do that?" And she put me on hold for a second and then came back and said, "Well, it's just that we have their records more accurately than we have for Maricopa. We just can't, we don't have, we're not able to process a Maricopa County ballot." So, I had to send them away. But then, as they, other people were coming through, it made me question why that was happening. So, I, I asked them, "Do you have information that will prove that you are a resident, that I can, I can verify that you are registered to vote here?" And they would pull out their card, and it very clearly said that they were Republican. They had a voter card. So, to, to test this theory out, I called the recorder's office and asked them. And they were denied. I had to deny them. And so, I was in a frenzy trying to take care of all of these people, but I found that the discrepancy between every vote counts and only those that the recorder's office would allow was indicative of how they chose who they wanted to allow to vote. And there was a consistency in the voter preference that they chose. And that concerned me because by the end of the night, which was at 8:15, after we counted all of the votes, and they got put in the box, and we were waiting for someone to come get them, I'm in the car, and the, the election was, was already counted for Arizona, which I found appalling, first of all, after working 15 and a half hours taking in votes. But the experience really led me to believe that it was not, there should have been a, a system that we could have followed because I understood that registered voters ended on a certain date, and you couldn't come in and vote. But I was having to allow people to vote that literally had just moved here within two weeks, three weeks. And they were all from two different, not all of them, I take that back, there was a large majority, a large percentage of people who were, had addresses from two apartment complexes. And the last thing is that I had a homeless man who came in with the, with the registration. And the reason I know he's homeless is because I said, "Where do you live?" And he said, he didn't speak English, and he said, "I don't have a home, but when I was at a, at a shelter, they registered me at the recorder's office." So, when I called about it, and they said, "Well, he was probably registered to be in this precinct." And I said, "But he doesn't live here." And they go, "Well, it's, anybody who was registered downtown can vote." And so, I found that to be odd. And last week, for work, I was on the other side of town, and I saw this gentleman on this side of Tucson with his shopping cart. And I, I swung into the parking space and called him and just said, "Hi, can I talk to you?" And when he saw me, he ran off, you know, for, who knows why. But my, my point is, is these are the kind of people that, that had apparently permission to vote in a precinct that was literally 25 miles away because they had a voting card that was given to them from downtown that, it was a downtown precinct that allowed him to vote here. So, my, my point is, is that if somebody from Pinellas County and Maricopa County can't vote, how is it that, in my, in this precinct, how is it that a homeless man from another area of the town and also people from other states were able to get permission to vote? And that was concerning to me, and that's why I'm here.
Ms. Orth, thank you very much. Mr. Giuliani, do you have any questions specific to this witness?
Sure.
Please proceed.
Couple of.
Just, just to give you a marker on time, it's 12:02.
So, you were there for 16 and a half hours, Ms. Orth?
On Election Day?
Yeah.
Yes.
Wow. And you were supposed to work with the ballots that were being, that were being examined?
I was working with the voters, the ballots of voters who were not able to walk into the precinct to vote normally on a ballot. So, some of them came to me saying, "It says that I got an early ballot, and I never got it." Others said, "It says, it doesn't even say that I'm on there. It says that I've already voted, or I'm, I'm not allowed to vote here." Those were the kind of...
So, these were ballots that had difficulties?
Yes.
And there were 28 or 35 people that were looking at those ballots that you had to observe?
No, that was, okay, on, on, I just described to you my experience as a poll worker on Election Day. Those 30 people that we, I... Those 30 people that we, I mentioned earlier were, were when I was a poll observer on the 16th of October at the elections office in Pima County.
And you were unable to see what they were doing?
I, it was a room as big as almost maybe half the size of this banquet room. And I was an observer watching 30.
As far away as we are?
I could walk behind them. I could walk behind them, but I couldn't walk behind 35 people at the same time.
And what were they doing?
They were taking them out of the envelope. They had already been, they had been brought in from the recorder's office where that, where the, uh, the ballot had been opened, the envelope had been opened. And according to what I was told, the signature had already been checked in another room.
But you didn't see the signature checked?
No, I didn't get to see that. They would take these out and they would take.
Did you ask to see it?
Yes, and I was not allowed.
And were you refused?
Yes. So they said, and I wasn't allowed to talk to anybody, but I, um, as I said before, I could talk to the supervisor. These people who sat at each of these tables, who were representative of mostly one party with Democrat Party. And, uh, they would take them out of the envelope and then put them, uh, in a pile and then separate the, the inside envelope. In Arizona, we have an outside envelope and the inside envelope and then the ballot, right?
Right.
So the ballot was then collected from the bin. So each table would get a bin and they would, uh, separate them, put the ballots in a, in a pile, put the envelopes in a, in a rubber band, put them to the side and then mark that they had such and such amount of, of regular ballots and such and such amount of duplicates, problematic ballots that then had to be taken to a table. Uh, and they would separate those, take the duplicates, mark them, put them at a table, which, which were then taken to the original room where I had been ushered out of. Not that I was not to help them.
In a room that you were excluded from, they examined the signatures?
Yes. No, they started examining the signatures, then removed to this room. And then from this room, they were then piled to then be tabulated later.
Did they do a further examination of the signatures?
No, not in this room. The only room that was done is.
You observed no examination of signatures and they refused to let you do that?
Right, I was only allowed to watch these people put these in piles. So when I was ushered back.
So how many, how many ballots do you think? Just a rough estimate? How many ballots, 1,000, 100, 2,000?
I would say each box had between 200 and 250 ballots. And I was there for five hours. And during that time that I was there, each table went through six to seven to eight, depending on how fast they were and how many mistakes they made. Because many times the, the ballots weren't click, weren't straight and they had to recount them or I would hear them say.
So how do we, how do we do that arithmetic?
All right, well, let's see, 250 times eight. Somebody who's not nervous maybe can say.
2,000.
That's per table. And there were about 16 to 17 tables of two people doing this at the same time.
So, so the, as I best understand this, there were 2,000 ballots times 17 tables?
Yes.
That you or anyone else that knew have got to check, got a chance? No Republican got a chance to observe that as far as you know?
Well, I was the only observer allowed in at one time. So a gal took over for me at one o'clock when I left. And I told her, I, I'm exhausted. I don't know how you can watch all 17, but stand behind one of the tables and, and they'll see that this particular table keeps folding them and tearing them. And once that happens, it has to become a duplicate. And when this becomes a duplicate, it goes to that table and it goes to the room where we don't get to see what happens to that. So you can't talk to them, but you can do this and tell them, look, that's, that's, that's folded or that's crooked or, um, and I said, if you see one again that has a pencil on it, the supervisor is saying that yes, it, she told me specifically that it could go through. I mean, told me that it, it couldn't, but told them that it could. So I said, there's some discrepancy in what she's telling me and what she's telling them. So, uh, you know, just do your best to try to, to keep an eye on this particular table is doing this. That particular table, when I walked by, is doing that. That one over there has a Pima County worker on it and she works here with them. And there's no Republican at that table. So it's, it's, it's very concerning. And so that was the, so when I was ushered out, they came specifically twice to me and said, uh, please don't talk to anybody and you cannot leave on your own. Make sure that when it's time, what time do you have to leave so we can walk you out? When they walked me out, the gentleman said, uh, I hope everything went well. And I said, well, I'm concerned because here they were, you know, that my only concern is the handling of the ballots, which makes them ineligible to go through the machine correctly. But it's the room before me and the room after me that's, it's a concern. I, I don't get to see.
Let me just, let me ask you about that. So a certain number of ballots were now put aside as duplicates.
Yes.
Duplicates means that they had a problem.
Yes, that they have to be duplicated.
Right. It didn't mean there were two ballots.
Right, that's what they called them.
Duplicates can sound like two ballots. What it meant was there's something wrong with it and therefore we may have to duplicate.
Yes, and that's the room that I was originally.
And they were put aside.
Put aside, taken out.
And they were brought into another room and you were not allowed to go in there?
No, I was not allowed to go back there.
So you, you were cut off from that also?
Yes, I was specifically taken out.
You were cut off from observing the problem ballots?
Yes, I was specifically taken out of that room, ushered out and brought into this room, which really was just the room as I explained.
And how many, how many, could you estimate that is?
Um, each table would have an average of, let's see, I would say maybe 1/16 of the pile. So, you know, let's say an average of maybe 10 to 20 ballots. But by the time I left, there were, these bins were filled. They would fill them, they would go correct them or whatever it is that they did and brought them back.
Best estimate?
Um, I would say my guess would be close to, uh, in the time, the day that I was there, just in five hours, maybe, uh, 2,000 ballots?
Okay.
Yeah.
And you had a sense that when there was problems with ballots or whether someone should vote or not, the choices that were being made were to allow people that appeared to be voting for Biden and the Democrats to vote and declining those who appeared to be people who might be voting for Trump or the Republicans?
Well, yes, I began to get that sense after I saw that people from other states who weren't even registered in the state of Arizona were being allowed to, to vote. I was given direction that I had to give them a provisional ballot. Because as they walked out, there was a gentleman out there who told me, he was specifically there to make sure that every vote voter who wanted to vote could vote. And so that was on election day though, Mr. Giuliani, that's not on the observ, the dance.
Right, I got it, I got it.
And on that day, that's, that happened. And then when I would get a voter who was from another county and had some indication, sometimes they had a shirt that either said Trump on it or they, they showed me their voter card and it, and said, I, you know, they gave me some indication that they, uh, were a Trump voter. And I had to call on them like I did for every single person that came in to the recorder's office. And I was told to send them away. And so it was at that point that I started to see that there, this isn't, this isn't, this can't be right, this can't be right. So I tested this and, and asked her. And then especially as I saw.
Glad you recognized that.
Yeah, and so when I said, they all, you all live at this apartment complex? And you all live at this other one? And, and they said, well, yeah, we have to, you know, we're all coming in to vote. And so I, I said, well, are you a reg, how long have you lived here? Are this your other precinct here? Well, I've lived here, I've lived there. And they still were allowed to vote. Uh, many of them were not residents for more than a month. Other people said they were registered in another state, but that they were here. And, and then as I said, I think the, the nail in the coffin for me was when this poor little, oh, homeless man, and I speak Spanish. So I spoke to him and said, you know, how are you here? How, and he said, I was told to come vote, I want to vote. And I said, okay, well, you know, do you, where do you live? And he goes, well, I've lived in a, um, shelter downtown. Well, downtown is 15 miles from where I live. So there, I'm sure that's not his precinct. He should be voting there.
So you thought there were about 2,000 like this roughly?
I would say easily just in the five hours that I was there on one specific day. And that was on a Friday, they were going to be counted, they were being collected to be tabulated.
One last question. The gentleman who said he was there to turn Arizona blue?
Yes, that was a guy.
What was he, what was his official position?
He had, he had a sign.
Is he an inspector of some kind?
No, he was an observer, a poll observer that was from California, was from LA. And in, and on a break, I walked out there and, and I, I said hello and just walking. And he said, hi. And I said, what are you doing? And he said, well, I'm a poll observer for the Democratic Party and I'm here. I said, oh, and he, and he goes, the weather is hot here. It's not this hot as it is at home. And I said, well, where are you from? And he said, I'm from California. And I said, what are you doing here? And he said, well, I'm here specifically to help turn this precinct blue. Well, this is one of our problem ones. And I said, oh, and as I said to the panel over here, I don't know why he felt comfortable telling me that. But he said, I, and I said, you came all the way from LA? He goes, no, actually I came from a other precinct in Maricopa where it was another one that we were, were focusing on and now I'm here.
What, what was he doing? Was he campaigning? Was he encouraging people to vote for, for Biden?
There was a group of them.
What activities did he take part in to turn Arizona blue?
Well, as I understood, because I was inside working, his job was to make sure that anybody who was turned away to vote, that he would have people he could call, attorneys in, in his words. Because I, I have a, a couple of attorneys that I'm connected to right now that if anybody's not allowed to vote, I can, um, make sure that they're represented. And so anybody who was not allowed to vote in that polling place, I was the one that they would be talking to. So of course, that was, that was somewhat directed at me since I'm the one who would say, no, you can't vote. So I don't know what else he was doing, but he said there was a group of them that were coming in.
They sent him there sometime after you began doing that?
He was there, well, we started at five o'clock in the morning, just getting ready. So when I went out for my, for a break, it was maybe around 10 o'clock and he had been there. Um, and they were, they, I, I'm sorry, I don't remember what he had on his shirt, but they were, they were very clear that they were, um, they had T-shirts, they said, that they matched. Another person came in to take over for him and it was a yellow shirt with something written on the front. I.
Well, thank you very much for your service and for your courage in testifying. I'll just make one point, Mr. Chairman. Uh, her testimony alone, and I see no reason why she isn't telling the truth. By the way, she's, is under oath in the sense that she submitted an affidavit under penalty of perjury to what she just testified to.
Thank you, sir.
34,000 votes unobserved would change the nature of an election, just our testimony.
Indeed it would.
One witness.
Ms. Ors, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Members, the, I, I know, I know everybody wants to ask a question. We need to, well, everybody has one. Um, it is now 12:15. I expect this hearing, uh, at the rate that we're going, we will be here until late into the night. Um, please be brief with your question and I would appreciate it if there's no follow-ups just so that we can have a lunch break, uh, and kind of set the expectation for the folks who are here and get back at it.
And we'll, we'll try to make the witnesses focus a little bit.
All right, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Um, Leo Biussucci, I'm sorry, Representative Biussucci, you're first and then Mr. Burley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, thank you, Anna, for, for being here. Just a quick question about the, the voters that you said were coming in that were from out of town or they just moved there, whatever their reasoning was. Did they have an Arizona ID with an address or anything to show you? Were they on the voter rolls or these?
They were not on the voter rolls. They had out-of-state driver's licenses, but had a, uh, either an electric bill or not, or some kind of a bill that they showed me on their phone, showed me that they lived in this particular precinct. With that, I would call the, the recorder's office.
And you would verify through them that they were indeed legal to vote?
Right. And so then when I'd say, well, when did you move here? Well, I moved here on such and such a date. But you had to have registered, I think in Arizona by the 15th. And then it was extended to the 22nd or the 23rd. So it was, it was just questionable that they were still allowed to vote. But I had a longtime voter who wasn't allowed to vote from another precinct. And yet someone could vote from another state.
Perfect, thank you.
Senator Burley?
Yes, sir, thank you, ma'am. When the votes that needed to be duplicated, the, the ones that needed to be corrected, when they went to the end of the room, did you notice anybody in there that was actually overseeing that correction, a Republican or a Democrat?
No, as I mentioned before, that's the first room I went into. And he explained to me that he, this is the room where that would happen, but that, um, I was not allowed to be in there.
When you were in there before they sent you somewhere else? Did you see a Republican and a Democrat observe?
No, he was alone, he was, no.
Only one? You know how he was registered? You know if he's a registered Republican or Democrat?
I, I don't know, but I have an idea, but that would be.
Bottom line is.
We'd appreciate, no speculation, thank you very much.
What's the violation of the law anyway? Because you're supposed to have both. Well, thank you.
All right, um, members, one question and then we're going to break for lunch. Uh, Representative Townsend?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, and I just have a really quick question. Um, we had our county recorder in Maricopa County instruct voters to cross out mistakes on their ballots, uh, for the November election. And then we later had a judge say, no, that was likely breaking the law. You can't do that. Um, we've also heard from adjudicators saying that they had seen a full Republican ballot all the way down, but that President Trump's name was crossed out and, um, the other candidate was circled in. Is it possible, in your opinion, in that other room that you weren't allowed to be in when there wasn't a second person watching the adjudication? Uh, were there pins allowed? Were there, were they, would someone be able to cross out one candidate and vote for someone else?
Well, again, I wasn't in there to be able to say this accurately, but there's only, you know, can make an assumption if, if a room requires two people and an observer, that a person by themselves, it's possible, of course, it's possible that that's what happened. But those are the kind of ballots that I'd see, that, because I was able to see them as they came through in this room. There was a, they were either all for, um, GOP or all for the Democratic Party. But one of the president, um, little oval had been marked off or not marked, crossed, which makes it a, a problematic ballot. So that would have to go into the other room that you're asking me about. And again, I wasn't in there to be able to speak accurately about what this person could or could have done or didn't do. Uh, and that to me was the problem in this whole issue. I, I, I'm useless to be able to watch people just putting them in order. I, we should have had an observer watching, um.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Ms. Ors, thank you very much for your testimony. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, um, here's how we're going to manage the lunch break. As you leave, please wait a minute before you walk out the door or you won't get back in. As you're walking out the door, you'll be given an armband. And in order to come back in, you'll have to show that armband. Um, we are going to break. It's, uh, now 12:22. We will be back here at one o'clock. It's going to be a short break, thank you.